Hello and welcome to the Monday, May 22, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 18, 2023 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Eckert, can we take role?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Mr. Murray?
Here. We have a quorum. I'll take a motion to move into executive session where is the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may include the public in that portion of the meeting in which the public body discusses certain matters where its confidentiality is required, as provided in Section 70 of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. One, the matters to be discussed are a personnel matter, a student disciplinary matter, and HSBA negotiations, and the previously listed hip appeal has been delayed. And number two, the matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll come back around 7:30. Thank you very much. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, May 22, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. If we could take a role, Mr. Eckert?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hio?
Here.
And Mr. Murray?
Here. We have a quorum. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hello and welcome. I would like to acknowledge the correspondences as listed, and I will do a very, very quick President's Board President's Report. And that is just very simply, although nobody has seen it, found it, liked it, or shared it, we do have a Board President's page on Facebook. I know it doesn't sound super exciting, but we will start sharing not only things like board meeting announcements to groups and other areas that are available, but we'll also be sharing a link to sign up for a newsletter from the Board, which our superintendent will speak more about, and other items of interest as it relates to the district. So maybe you can go find it or just wait for next week's meeting when I make the announcement and give it a follow and share in the knowledge sharing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh.
For my superintendent's report tonight, I have some interesting news and some very good news, too. You may remember last board meeting, I talked about a residency verification program, and you'd be getting more information about it. Over the next few weeks, I'm going to continue to communicate with all families about the start of this program. Unfortunately, we have not had a standard practice in place in the Hillsborough Township Public Schools for many years, and by all accounts, it's highly recommended that districts develop this type of program for the most accurate enrollment possible for budgetary, staffing, and program efficiency. So on June 1, 2023, all families are going to receive a school messenger that will direct you to a residency verification form in the Genesis Parent Portal. It's going to ask that you select how you currently reside in Hillsborough Township. There'll be a drop-down menu, are you a homeowner, apartment owner, and a few other options as well. I'm going to ask that everybody complete the form by Tuesday, June 20, 2023, and we're not requiring any documentation at this time. You literally just have to update this form. Details on how and when to submit your proof of residency would be forthcoming, and I will continue to communicate this out in a variety of means, just wanted to let everyone know. Do you know of a family member or community member who would like to subscribe to the district's weekly letter newsletter, Hillsborough Happenings? You can now visit the district website, and under News, members of the community can subscribe. So right now, we push it out to all family members, but if there are community members who listen to Board of Education meetings, or if you know someone who does not have children in the school and would like to get on our mailing list for Hillsborough Happenings, and we can advertise the president's Facebook page, please get on. We can do that for you. I also want to remind all families that school will be closed this Friday, May 26, through Wednesday, May 31, in observance of Memorial Day. This extended weekend includes the unused emergency days for this school year. I would also ask that over the weekend, please take a moment to reflect on the meaning of Memorial Day, as we recognize the commitment of America's military servicemen and women who lost their lives while defending our country. It's not just a day off, it's a time of remembrance. One of our middle school teachers, Ian Evans, is finishing up his year as County Teacher of the Year. He has given multiple speeches in a variety of venues, impressed educators and board members alike, and we really want to take a moment to thank Ian for his efforts. And I've already talked to Mr. Evans about kicking off the next school year at a new staff orientation, giving one of his inspirational speeches to that. If you didn't know he was a County Teacher of the Year, we wanted to make sure that Ian got his due. Then finally, Mr. President, I have a request that after a public comment on any action items, that we move up Action Item Number 13.9 immediately after public comment and take a roll call vote on that, as I'm going to ask for the Board to make my first two hires of my administrative team as superintendent here in Hillsborough. And those two people who are listed in the agenda are here in the audience tonight, and I would like to especially separate that out and recognize them at that time. Everything else that I had said about residency and subscribing to Hillsborough Happenings, I will follow up with you with additional communications, and as always, it is my pleasure to serve the township of Hillsborough. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move forward into committee reports. I think, let's start with HR. Ms. Nurse?
So, the HR Committee met-
A little closer.
The HR Committee met on May 17 at 5:30 PM. All of our committee was there. The first thing that we talked about was recommendation for salary increases for unaffiliated staff and administrators. Then we had the opportunity to also talk about approval of a long-term leave for a teacher who put in a request for an education experience. We talked about the two, sorry, we talked about the two staff members that are on the agenda tonight that have been recommended by Dr. Volpe, the, I'm sorry, supervisor, special services supervisor, and a high school vice principal. We were able to talk a little bit about the activity fees in our ad hoc committee and about the purpose for beginning this committee and taking a look at our practices, and we will be continuing that conversation at our next committee. And we have, I believe that is everything. Yes, we will be looking, there was a recommendation from the dance team that we're going to be looking for more information on and discuss at our next meeting along with club proposals. And that is everything.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll now move on to education.
The Education Committee met Tuesday, May 16 at 4:00 PM. Our two main items were the Four Tendencies and the Hate You Give, both summer reading books. Four Tendencies, we had a brief discussion with some minor reservations, and the Hate You Give, we had a more extensive discussion with the split among members, which will be discussed later. We also discussed the pre-calc AP curriculum, which is good because with the shift away from math analysis towards pre-calc, we were able to have an AP class, allow our students to take an AP test, which is good for all of our students taking that kind of class and wanting to go into higher education. We also had a brief informational discussion on Spanish situation at the high school. We had a brief discussion, a brief preliminary discussion around English CP levels. We also had a robust conversation about the Gifted and Talented, current and future Gifted and Talented Program for 5th through 8th graders, and we're still in the process of like reviewing that and any data, and will update upon any action taken by the Board.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Hio, operations, please.
Thank you. The Operations Committee met on Tuesday, May 16, and we discussed several items, including a donation of tactical locker that is on tonight's agenda. It is a company based out of Hillsborough. We donated Emergency Tactical Response Locker, so that committee supported accepting that donation. Again, it's on tonight's agenda. We also talked about payroll verification. That again is on tonight's agenda on the Operations Committee. We also had a, a photographer came and presented to us virtually, so Mr. Griff, with his report asking, presented his report to the committee, and all board members have that report and receive an update from him. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to review them before it's done. Then the committee had an update on the custodial floor restoration project, and this restoration project has been taking place since November 2022. It's quite an intensive project. The floors are being stripped and re-flapped and renewed every few years, and they're in progress. Then a fun discussion was about pickleball, a possible pickleball partnership with the township. So there are anti-tennis courts that are in poor condition, and it is, was discussed with the township that perhaps we could, we could partner with them to repair the tennis courts and also line them for tennis and pickleball, so that discussion will be happening. Then finally, there was discussion on the HHS and AMS, anti-tennis court, yeah, anti-tennis court HVAC, and there was HVAC system that was failing, and that is also on tonight's agenda moving forward. So, and that completes the report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And then for governance, two main items of discussion. First, obviously, voluntary four strategic planning efforts are going to take place this year. So we had three different proposals that were presented to us by the organization with those proposals, and we made a soft decision to do a follow-up with one and potentially move forward, and once we get the information, we will potentially assign that to that organization. And the other item of discussion was the school and facility naming policy. Currently, it's effectively a policy that says that, of course, discussion, and then there was an option to add a significant amount of detail. I think we didn't want to rush doing that, so we had a very thorough discussion on that and decided at the time, for the time being, we're going to continue with the existing policy and revisit that in the future. Also, as a kind of aside to that, there was a nomination for naming that we will consider and put more information on before approval. And that, I believe- Ms. Nurse?
I'm sorry. I just, I knew that I was forgetting something. Were you finished with your part?
I'm finished with governance.
I'm sorry. Going back to HR, I knew I scrolled a little too fast. I did want to mention that we did, our HR Committee unanimously recommended the approval of sick patch leave that is on the agenda for tonight for a member for 28 days, and also that we did talk about our, how to acknowledge accolades and awards of staff members, that they're recognized with a framed certificate, and that we were going to do this biannually, saw September and January, and at a board meeting, and we will be putting it on our website and posting it in the weekly newsletter.
All right. Thank you very much. I don't think I missed any other committee discussions today. All right. So we'll now move on to the first public comment period. Public input on the organization action agenda. We're very much welcome to the public during board meetings, so we keep 30-minute periods of time, that the meeting will be open to public comment, and the public are entitled to comment, which they do appear to any person. During the first public comment period, members of the public, they comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the Board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public, they comment any school, school district issue that a member of the public feels they have concern or residence. The school district profile is 0167. Before you see your comment, you are asked to provide name and address. For anything that live in a public comment, please understand that public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather offers opportunities, serious calls for the Board. This is where the Board believes there's a misunderstanding or an act. You see, the Board President or Superintendent will address the comment. There may be times a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring issues, coming note that the open agreement, the privacy rights of public employees that comes their end, not for the Board, permit the Board to discuss personnel issues in public session. All right. Anybody on the action agenda?
Hi, Amy Salinger, teacher at Otten Road Intermediate School and HGA treasurer. I just, I was not prepared to speak tonight, but then I realized that the curriculum document was in there. So I did notice, one of, which is a pretty big change, is that reach will no longer be offered at Otten Road, and it's just listed as a K through 12 service. So I know you can't answer questions right now, but something to think about is, you know, when will that be conveyed to the public, to the staff, as far as what reach or gift and talent is going to look like at this level, because I work here and I haven't heard anything about that yet. You know, we've eliminated levels. I think that's, I don't know if that's a plan to go forward in the higher grades, but just, you know, the better there is of collaboration and communication on those things, the better. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Stefania Lockwoods, most on Otten Road. Just following up on that as well, I'm pretty sure it's my understanding that Gifted and Talented is just as much covered by the state mandates for differentiated instruction as remedial instruction. So I'm a little confused how we're completely gutting Gifted and Talented from grade levels and still meeting state requirements, just concerning. Thank you.
Thanks, dear Thomas. Is there any other public comment for the action agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will close the first public comment. And go to-
Yes. Wow, sorry. Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to move Item 13.9 up for-
Excuse me? Yes.
We don't do port comment for the first one, but we can if you'd like to make comments. Would you like, you can if you'd like. No?
Okay. Yes, I'd like to move Item 13.9 up for both either Board, but I'd like to say a couple comments, if that's okay?
Sure.
So tonight, I'm excited to add two new members of the administrative team. After a long and exhaustive search, we have two longtime administrators here in Hillsborough who are retiring this year, Donna Landon, as well as Mike Semborski, who were major members of the team for many years. Relative to Ms. Landon's position, after an exhaustive search that drew more than 100 applicants, including many with administrative experience, my recommendation to the Board is for Alyssa Farace to be on the agenda tonight to fill the vacancy created by Ms. Landon's retirement. Alyssa's currently an in-class support teacher in the Monroe Township School District and holds degrees from Rutgers in Psychology, Elementary, and Special Ed, and holds a Supervisor of Instruction endorsement. Alyssa demonstrated high levels of expertise and a kind demeanor throughout the interview process. One of the things I really liked in going through the interview process with her, she spoke about children and making sure that programs meet the needs of children, not trying to squeeze children into existing programs, which really resonated with the members of the committee. Also, the fact that she's a teacher, she taught pre-COVID, during COVID, and after COVID, and she's bringing all of those experiences now into a role as a supervisor, I think is going to be a tremendous asset to us. So Alyssa, if you wouldn't mind just standing and having yourself recognized, sharing one. And there's another person I'd like to recognize, too. A longtime member of the Raider family, Christine Cilio is on the agenda tonight to fill that vacancy I mentioned created by Mike Semborski's retirement. Christine has been a highly regarded educator at the high school for 20 years. She received her bachelor's degree and master's of education from TCNJ, and she holds a principal and supervisory certification through the NJXL Program and Foundation for Educational Administration. One thing I talked about, too, was building the capacity of our team and making sure that people are given chances to grow, and Ms. Cilio has done nothing but prove that she is somebody who is ready to take that next step in her career, and I couldn't be more thrilled to recognize one of Hillsborough's own for a long time. So Christine, if you wouldn't mind standing up, too, and being recognized. And, Mr. President, with your permission, I can ask Mr. Eckert to move forward with a roll call vote to add these two new members of the Hillsborough Administrative Team.
Yes. First, I'll take a motion, and the second?
Oh, do that first.
So moved.
Now that we have a motion, we can take role on 13.9? Oh, yes. Any comments or questions from the Board before we take role? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to role.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes, and congratulations.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Very happily, yes.
Congratulations, Alyssa and Christine. Welcome aboard.
All right. So now we'll move on to the, a minute, sis. I'm scrolling up and down to find where we are here. All right. So now we have 10 dot 1 and 10 dot 2. Motion to approve executive session minutes 5:823, and motion to approve regular meeting minutes 5:823. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the Board on the minutes? All right.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'll be abstaining.
You'll be abstaining. Okay. Thank you very much. Can we take role, Mr. Eckert? Oh, sorry. All in favor with one abstention? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. So now we'll move on to-
Sure. As far as the action agenda goes, I'm going to ask for the Board's consideration of the following mid-year organization meeting motions, including the designation of signatories, designation of an official newspapers, designation of depositories for school funds, board auditors, board attorney, architect of record, school physicians, insurance brokers of record, school warrants, board policies, job descriptions, school district curricula, field trip destinations, the Strong Plus Model for Evaluations, membership in the NJSIAA Skyland Conference, designation of affirmative action and Title IX Coordinator, Section 504 Officer, Liaison for Homeless Students, the Board Secretary, the Attendance Officer, the Designation of the Public Agency Compliance Officer, purchases from state contract vendors, advertising bids for goods and services, cooperative purchasing, and that's it.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the Board? Seeing none, we take role, please.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hio?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of education, I'd ask for the Board's consideration to approve the following motions. Professional and travel-related expenses, affirming the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying, termination for the attached cases, revised curriculum, new books, approving counselors to provide counseling services during the summer of 2023, approving stipends for staff attending summer science institutes, approving intern affiliation with, agreement with Kane University, approving the submission of the application and acceptance of funds in the amount of $177,562 from the FY 2023 School Development Authority Emergent Needs and Capital Maintenance in School Districts grant, approving the submission of the Department of Justice Community Oriented Policing Service's School Violence Prevention Program Grant Application, motion to accept the grant, motion to approve the long-term suspension of a student.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'd like to separate 12.4.
So I'll take a motion in a second, then we'll take that-
Second.
Okay. So we need a motion to separate 12.4, you said?
Right. Book approval.
Okay. So the discussion first on the overall agenda, and then we'll take a motion to separate 12.4. Is there any comments or questions on the agenda in general? After we take the motion, if you have a comment on 12.4, we can then add that in then.
I just have clarification online in my report. I sung up races of AP health. I forgot to mention that what we're actually approving is the AP health package, which is technically part of 12.4 here, but it's in general.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, then we'll take a motion to separate 12.4 as requested. Need a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Do you want any comments as to why you're asking for the separation, or just?
Would you like my comments now?
Yeah, before we approve, when we separate it.
Sure. And it's, has to do with approving the books. One of the books is for the summer reading programming. It's The Hate You Give. And we did talk about this in the Education Committee, and this is an acclaimed book. It's a popular book. It addresses some pretty tough topics. I have no objection to the need to address these topics. It talks about police brutality and murder, and there's some tough stuff that's going on here. My sole objection to the book, and as I explained at the committee meeting, you know, if the Board approves a book to be included on the summer reading list, I feel as though the Board is, in effect, recommending the book. And I have, I'm just not comfortable recommending this book because of the profanity and the vulgar language and that kind of stuff, which I just don't think is appropriate to be recommended by the Board to school students. I know everybody talks that way, and we've all heard the words, and on and on, but it just, it's a hurdle for me to recommend the book, and so I will withhold my approval on that because of that.
Okay.
I would also like to call out, separate on the Four Tendencies as well. The Four Tendencies.
So same, the same item, but the same, call that four. But your comment is on another book in there as well. Okay. Thank you. All right.
I just want to clarify, the summer reading book, that particular book, The Hate You Give, that was what the students voted for? Yes? Okay. So-
Yes.
Okay. So if we're, you know, shying away from that, then we're really taking away their voice in voting for this, so I understand where you're coming from, but, you know, literature, art, art in any form, literature, theater, fine art, a lot of that can get pretty, maybe even vulgar, but it's still art, and I just worry about us engaging in something that could approach censorship. So, but what I really, what I really want to emphasize is that the students were given this opportunity to lend their vote, their voice, and this is what they voted for. This was the winner, so I think we should support that.
May I ask you a question? First of all, this is not censorship, because the book is available-
Okay.
The book is, this is not censorship. The book is available to anyone who wants to read it. I think part of the concerns as well, and I had some concerns, was that are we really reaching every student with the selections that were provided to vote on? And are our students really taking advantage of voting? Are they actively participating? So I think the process in general, we talked about revisiting the process, but I'm not so sure the books that were selected for voting actually met the needs of all of the students across the Board. So I think it, there's a little bit more beyond what Mr. Davis stated. And again, I want to put it out there, this is not censorship. Those books are available for any student who wants to read them.
But we would be removing, I believe they follow up on the summer reads with discussion, I think, in the classroom in September, so we'd be removing that opportunity for that to be part of a discussion among students from the classroom. So, you're right. But yes, they will still have that opportunity to read it if it weren't part of the summer reading list, so, but we would be removing their opportunity to discuss it in the classroom.
Mr. Hio?
So when I saw it was on the Education Committee agenda, I started reading the book, and I hear what you're saying with the profanity. It is, there is, there is profanity in the book. However, I feel that it's, it's like the voice, the character's voice, her family, it's just very authentic when you read the book. It's, I mean, I don't like profanity. I don't use it at home. I try not to, right? But that is, that's like my personal- But that is... that's like my personal, um, how I... But reading it, reading the book, it did not feel contrived. It felt like very realistic. And I think that, as Ms. Stats said, with the students having that choice, I feel that we do them a disservice by not allowing them the opportunity to choose to read that book as part of one of the four books that they would read this summer. And so that's... I don't... I... I encourage... I mean, I understand your... I think I understand your objections, but I... but no student has to choose that book. And I think that giving them this opportunity to read it is important. That book is... I mean, I'm only halfway through it because I just kind of started reading it. It's excellent. It's... I mean, so far, it's excellent. It is scary, but I think that that's... That is the circumstance that some young people live in, so.
Um, I'm just jumping in as well. I started reading the book as well, but I actually saw the movie about three years ago. So I've seen it in full. Um, I think I would recommend people do take a look and read it, review the content. It's actually a very nuanced story. I know the scary part is, oh, police shooting, but that's not what the story is about. This is a coming-of-age story. Uh, as Jean said, the voice is very authentic. Um, the protagonist, character, Star Carter, her uncle is a police officer. So she even confronts her uncle, "Hey, what's going on?" And the uncle actually provides a very nuanced, um, perspective, like, well, take it from my perspective. There is a child that... I'm in an elevated, um, I have an elevated sense of danger in a situation. This person could be packing a gun, and he's providing his perspective on things too. So this is not a one-sided perspective. This is a very nuanced story. There's a lot of perspectives offered here, and again, it's a coming-of-age story. So it... this is just kind of the... the controversial portion of it is just a side piece of it. But overall, it's definitely... definitely something that I think should be reviewed at the high school level.
Ms. Stats?
Okay, and just another point I want to make, um, I mean, there's murder and awful things that are... that take place in lots of literature that, uh, uh, we often enjoy reading in, you know, like murder mysteries as adults. That doesn't mean we endorse it. So if there's vulgar language, again, it's a part of being authentic, that doesn't mean we endorse its use on the part of our students.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
I just wanted to say, um, I think the important thing here is that it is a book that's given as one of several options. If anyone is uncomfortable with the subject matter, they can choose not to read it. There are plenty of other, um, options. I... I do think, however, that the subject matter is important to, um, important to teenagers today, and giving them an opportunity to discuss that um, when they come back from summer break in their English classes helps to further discussion that I think is important to have in a safe environment. And in the end, I do think the book has a really positive message in that the main character is really finding their own voice and being able to speak for themselves. And I think anyone, um, in, you know, high school age is trying to figure that out and find that out for themselves. So I think from that perspective as well, it gives a really, uh, good option.
Okay, and I'll just add one note. I know all but one comment was focused around whether this was a good book or not. I do want to acknowledge Ms. Jackson's point of how the selected list to vote on came to be. So that's maybe something that's not something we're voting on now, but something that could be reviewed in the future on how we select the books for selection. So I just want to acknowledge those comments. I know, Ms. Jackson, you made that comment. That kind of got blown by, so I want to make sure that point was made clear. So we have very varying positions on the book itself, which is great. That's part of the discussion we're having here now. It's part of the discussion they want to have at class, right? The validity of the... of the content, but that point also is valid. I want to acknowledge that. All right, so I'm going to move to a vote, and this is on the separation of 12 dot four. So you're not voting on to accept 12 dot four, but you do have to vote on the motion to separate 12 dot four. This is the comment of whether or not we should separate, so if we can take roll on that one, please. Sure. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd? Ms. Lanning Beeter? Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, so now we will vote on 12 dot four. We'll do that one first. So this is the actual voting on 12 dot four that was asked to be separated. Oh, you want to have another comment, Ms. Jackson?
So obviously not that it's...
But they're combined, I understand.
So one vote for all three? It is one vote for all three? Or can we separate out?
The way it is written, where we'd have to vote to separate out the books from the curriculum. So I think for right now, we'll keep them as one, and we'll vote on 12 dot four as a whole. All right, so let's take vote on... on that.
So what are we voting on?
We're voting on 12 dot four. Just 12 dot four.
I have one comment before we get to vote.
Sure.
Kind of two things. Number one, I felt like, um, I... I was, when I was, you know, looking over the book, I was thinking about just, you know, who I personally read it, but I was also thinking about it, but, you know, how would I be able to make an assignment, write an assignment about it or a discussion about it as a high school student? And something we didn't discuss enough here was, um, one of the big statements of the book was, um, this book was the, uh, the book would be called The World, uh, and her poor lower-class neighborhood and her, um, and her middle-class suburban, uh, students. It's like young people, they find themselves in between a lot of conflicting, uh, social spaces, whether it's, you know, wrong religious, wrong religious, and the most secular arts world. There are so many different things that, um, students get conflicted about when they grow up, and I can see like a lot of valuable discussion from any student, regarding a subject like that. So I spent the, um, probably productive hours in that aspect. Um, and the other thing was, you know, I understand that the language is a concern. Frankly, I think it was a concern for me when I saw it, but, um, I think it served the purpose of, I think it served not only the purpose in this case, but the purpose of vulnerability. I think that also should be discussed there, maybe was that a, uh, that is a disclaimer appropriate in this case, and that allows students to inform the safety of what they're... about what they're...
Thank you, Mr. Heo. All right, so move to roll on 12 dot four. Mr. Davis?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray? Yes, motion passes. All right, now we'll move on to 12 dot one through 12 dot 11, um, except for 12 dot four, which previously goes on. Is there any further discussion on the rest of the agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll for those. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, board members, for the discussion as well. In the area of human resources, I would ask for the board's consideration for the following: approving administrative leave, retirements and resignations, transfers and changes in assignments for 2324, revised leave replacement teacher, leaves of absence, co-curricular advisor for 2223, appointments for 2223, appointments for 2324. And we already took care of 13 point nine, so 1310. Uh, motion to approve student teachers for 2324, uh, renewal of non-tenured certificated staff for 2324, renewal of tenured certificated staff for 2324, renewal of HEA office personnel for 2324, approval of renewal of clerical assistants and parking lot attendants for 2324, approving the renewal of instructional assistants for 2324, approving the renewal of lunch aids for 2324, approving the extended school year program staff, approving extra coverage, approving stipend payments. And that concludes each hour.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve 13 point one through 13 point eight and 13 point 10 through 13 point 19. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray? Motion... uh, yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of operations, I would ask the board's consideration for the following, approve the following motions: monthly bills, our monthly financial statement, our financial status, line item transfers, an agreement with the UC ESC for the 2324 school year, amending a prior action item, 13 point six from previous agenda. Motion to approve a quote for HVAC repair and replacement at high school. Motion to approve HVAC repair and replacement at Amsterdam. Motion to approve proposal with Nisabachi LLP to perform required payroll verification. Proving an agreement with Effective School Solutions LLC. Professional service providers for the 2324 school year. Approval of waste disposal contract for the 2324 school year. Motion to reject bids for the fire shed replacement at the high school. Motion to approve out-of-district placements for 2223. A motion to accept donation, as mentioned in the Operations Committee Minutes. And a motion to approve the sale and disposal and sale of obsolete equipment. Uh, approving this and motion to approve a settlement agreement.
Can I get a motion in a second from the board for the Operations Agenda? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board?
I have some questions about the HVAC. There's substantial numbers, um, and there's substantial numbers anyway. You know, you can't do HVAC easily, but it's 900 something thousand dollars to address those issues. And, um, I'm just concerned about the process. Have there been multiple bids and, you know, those types of things, and where's the money coming from? You know, we just had our budget cut by $900,000. Now, it's about six of that's coming back, I guess. But, uh, just some general questions about the HVAC. We did talk about it in the Operations Committee. But I would like to just bring some stuff out while we're here.
Sure.
Minister, would you like to speak to just the process involved, if not more details?
Sure, and the process for that is we... we are doing it through one of the cooperatives that we work with. So they were... for someone to have the warranty contract, they would have been put out to bid by the agency that manages that type of co-op. So it wasn't a bidding process. It wasn't bid on this specific job. It was bid on HVAC replacement costs, uh, for this type of project. And based on that, the company then comes out and walks the building and walks the spaces, uh, in the streets of the high school. It was all, um, 600 wing, um, open events that have been in there since they were first installed 20, 25 years ago. And have been in... it's breaking down periodically. The work also is going to be done next summer at this point. HVAC equipment is a longer time. Uh, it's one of the funding sources that... where this is coming from, it's kind of being split funded. Part of it's coming from the grant that we awarded in education earlier, the $177,000 SBA grant. And the balance will be coming from, um, the remainder of the million-dollar, extra million dollars that we received from the state at the state budget last year. So this will be using up pretty much the balance of those funds.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we approve the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray? Uh, yes, motion passes. We'll move on to the second public comment period. Uh, we very much welcome it from the public. During board meetings, it'll be considered in terms of the time that we may open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. Uh, during the second public comment period, members of the public may come out of any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be a concern to the residents of the school district under File Law 0167. Before you say your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions. Rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. During times when members of the public make a comment or ask a question about personnel hiring decisions, kind of note the Urban Public Needs Act and the Privacy Act, the public employees encompass therein, and offer the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. It's quick. Any individuals who'd like to come up for public comment?
Good evening, Cindy Asini Ski Drive. I just wanted to speak in favor of attention to our gifted and talented learners. My professional journey has helped me realize the extent to which our students who have previously received reach services and now will be receiving services under the title of gifted and talented programming, how important it is as we're looking at our continuum and responding to student needs, that we have stakeholder input from parents and students, and that we have programmatic changes that have clear goals and measurement along the way to see the success of those changes. So I just wanted to share that, um, given my professional journey and experience, um, with that particular population.
Thank you for your comment. Any other individuals?
Good evening, Stephanie Lockwood, Ms. Summer Gero. Considering that the agenda was only published on Friday, I didn't have much time to try to read The Hate U Give, but I would just like to follow up on that. So I'm just going to read something to you. There have been many complaints made against this book. Many people feel the book contains inappropriate offensive language, sexual content, and violence. Vulgarity is one complaint the book gets over and over again. Characters swear steadily throughout the book. The F-word is seen three or four times at the end of the book. Now, you know I'm not talking about the same book, but I'm pretty sure it's probably three more than three or four times. However, Holden is a shocker to the reader, and that would be Holden Coffield. I'm reading to you from discussions that have occurred about Catcher in the Rye over the last 50 years. Um, and to hear that we're having these same conversations for the same reasons is frankly embarrassing. It... it is absurd to me that in a world where these kids can get on TikTok and see every F and S and every other word in the world on the bus in ARIS, yes, it happens. Yes, it is not stoppable. Excuse me, no, it is not stoppable. And we're worried about high school readers reading a book with foul language? Hillsborough is rough. It's right in our name. Hillsborough is rough. Like, come on, we've got to toughen up a little bit. This is... this is... this is a recycled rehash of the same old arguments that had been made about books that some of you read when you were in school, because I certainly read them when I was in school. Like, it's not 1960 or 1990. It's 2023, for crying out loud. Like, it's... it's... it's really, really, really disappointing that certain board members have decided to bring what is ultimately a culture war issue to Hillsborough after everything that we have been through in the last year, that certain board members have found it necessary to try to send us back to some great time. I don't know what. I don't know. But I... I could have been reading about The Hate U Give, right? When I started, and it wasn't until I got to that one part, it's the same argument. It's the same argument, and it has never been substantiated in the past, and it will not be substantiated now. And I appreciate the board members who did the right thing by the students, by providing them the opportunity, by respecting their voice. You want to know what young people care about? Being heard. And two of you silenced them today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Leila Nashi. I live on Murray Drive. I have two kids that go to, uh, the school district. Um, I was just very surprised that we did vote down the reach program with no discussion. So I wonder if that's something that we would consider revisiting. I think a lot of kids get a lot of benefit out of that program. Um, and I don't know, like, is there a plan for, you know, moving forward for, like, the middle school, the ARIS, like, of where those high-achieving kids are going to go or be placed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I just wanted to, I know a couple of speakers have spoken about REACH, and perhaps as superintendent, I haven't done a good enough job in describing and explaining things. None of the board members tonight voted the REACH program away. I just want to be very clear about that. And if there are changes coming, we need to publicize that better or get information out to the community, we will do so. But just to clarify, no board members tonight voted to eliminate the REACH program, and we will communicate out any changes to the public in a variety of ways.
All right, seeing none of the members up at the dais, we'll close public comment. We'll move to board comment.
I wanted to clarify, mentions of REACH gifted and talented was mentioned as a part of my committee report. It was an informational item of our education committee, and it was just a discussion. We didn't take any action at the board meeting tonight. It wasn't an action item on our agenda. In fact, I myself am a gifted and tal, was a gifted and talented student at Hillsborough, and I shared their, their needs in mind very personally. And one of the, met, one of the parts of our robust discussion was that we need to make sure that this is a robust process that includes communications, that includes communication with parents and students, and that we want the best of our students.
Ms. Nurse?
I think Ben did a good job of saying a lot of what I was thinking, but I do feel like I have pushed for presentations about changes that are coming down our way at board meetings for, since I've been here, and it needs to be done. We cannot have a situation like we did a couple of years ago where all of a sudden a math program was taken away and nobody knew about it until after the fact. So we will continue to promote communication to the community. I hope that we are having that conversation after we've talked to the staff and make sure that they are aware. But I have faith in us, that that's exactly what's going to happen, that we're going to be able to communicate clearly and let everybody know what, if any, changes we are considering as we move forward.
Dr. Belcher, would you like to just take a minute and talk about the process that has been taking place all year? Not, not in detail, but just where we are.
So the process has been actually a couple of years in the making, but this year in particular, we had a turnover in administration. And along the way, you know, last year budgetarily, we had cuts in which, in the REACH teachers. So those services have been incorporated into the other end of RTI and providing gifted and talented service, or intervention, if you will, for, for those students using the media specialists who were not experts in GNT. And then this year with our new supervisor, he is working with the building administrators along with the teachers, and we have two really dynamic media specialists at the middle school and Otten Road who are really interested in providing enrichment gifted and talented services to our students that are more than just aligned with social studies, which is where we have been primarily providing the instruction, knowing that not every child is gifted in social studies. So this is an attempt to target their individual learning gifts and talents. And it's a process. So we're in the beginning phases with a new supervisor who needs to learn about gifted and talented, as well as our interventionists who are learning how to better analyze data and the criteria for not only those who struggle with learning, but those who excel. So that's where we are in the process, in the ongoing conversation.
Thank you. And to be clear, and thank you, Mr. Kidd, for bringing that up. Any, there was a discussion that was brought to the ed committee, and after speaking with the ed committee, we said, hey, this, this presentation is not ready to be widely distributed at this time. There's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. So keep the ed committee informed, and once we're ready to, you know, further communicate things out, we will, we will make sure that we do so.
Ms. Stats?
Regarding the, the Gift and Talent Program and, you know, REACH, as well as, I've brought up this concern before about, you know, we just have, we have college prep, at the high school, we have college prep and above honors slash AP. So I worry about the, you know, our struggling students, especially in college prep, which covers a wide swath of majority of our students. My overall question, I guess, comment is, are we getting, is there collaboration with, with the teachers who are the ones who implement this? And from what I've been reading, this will be infused in, across the social studies classes at, in, in the, before high school. So I think it's important for teachers to be part of the decision-making process instead of finding that information out after the fact. I just encourage teachers being part of the decision-making process anytime it's going to be affecting students, because they're the ones on the front lines that are implementing these programs.
Comment?
Mr. Davis?
Actually, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for a robust and frank conversation about my concerns about that book. Thank you for the opportunity to voice that.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I just want to say that I really don't think it's appropriate to tell two no votes that it's taking a voice away from students. I think from my perspective, and the point I tried to make is that the list of books that were voted on may not be reaching every student. So on the flip side to this is there are students out there that aren't voting on, that aren't voting for books because their books that are being offered are of no interest to them. So I think we have to take a more fair and equitable look at what books are presented to students for that vote. And as far as the use of profanity, I don't think we should ever encourage any of our children to use profanity or accept it. I think TikTok is a bad example, and I think we should really take it more seriously. I, you know, I think what's best is widening a child's, you know, perspective, giving them good books to read to develop a good vocabulary and good comprehension. So I really think that the flood that was put into these votes really does matter, and it is in the interest of the children.
Ms. Hugh?
So I wanted to address, when public comment happens, I do understand the public has the right to say whatever they like to say, but I do want to support my colleagues, Mr. Davis and Ms. Jackson, because they do want to have, it's important for board members to feel comfortable to express their opinion, no matter what their opinion is. And we've had in the past, and tonight, members of the public who will say something to criticize. I mean, I've been criticized myself, so it's not, you know, it's equal opportunity criticism. But I, but I want to encourage the board, my fellow board members, to continue to speak up for what they believe is right. I mean, I think that's very, very important, and I just want to thank you both for, for speaking up tonight.
Yeah, and I'll echo that and say it's also unfortunate that some voices may stifle others from speaking at the dais because they feel like they may get called out as well. So this is supposed to be a constructive meeting where we're sharing our thoughts as elected officials and, and not be chastised for having an opinion that we feel is in the best interest of the students. So I again thank both of you as well, just like Mr. Hugh is, for expressing your opinions. And it was a friendly, fruitful conversation. Points got addressed and heard and successful, though.
Yeah, I wanted to say that, too. I think, I think debate sometimes is foundational, whether it's in a committee or whether it's at the dais. And I have been parts of board meetings in other districts that weren't handled nearly as civilly as this, and I would like to thank those of you who were debating and looking at different sides for, for having your discourse in a manner that I expect out of Hillsborough. I have been in districts where people have charged the dais, where I thought I had to step in between a student and, and an angry parent along lines for those things. We're not always going to agree, but I think when we talk about it in a civil manner, that goes to show the, the strength of Hillsborough, that we can have differences of opinions. And for those of you who are concerned about curricular issues, too, believe me, behind closed doors in committees, we have differences of opinions as well, and I welcome those difference opinions, but I will always inform this board with accurate information. And just thank you for your, your willingness to engage in a debate and ultimately make a decision. And when we do make a decision, the board, whether it's five, four, seven, or sorry, that doesn't make it, five, four, nine, nothing, the board speaks with one voice and then moves forward. So thank you for that.
Ms. Stats?
Just along the same lines, you know, I, like you said, you know, we all did this respectfully, and if we all agreed, I think that would be disservice to the public, because we should all presenting, be presenting our own informed opinions. And I think we've done that successfully because that will inform ourselves, you know, as I hear other perspectives, but also the public, so that they will hear, you know, a well-rounded representation of whatever the concerns are. So I think this is, you know, a part of being transparent, that, that we're not just mindlessly going a lockstep with one another and providing our own feedback.
If you do want to go lockstep with exactly what I think, Ms. Stats, I encourage that too as well. I don't have a problem.
All right. Ms. Nurse?
I'm going to try not to repeat what everybody has said, and I'm glad that Jean jumped in, so thank you. I was trying to form my thoughts before I spoke, but I just feel like this is my third year as part of this group, and I feel that we have come a long way as a group in being able to express ourselves here instead of worrying about, oh, not, I don't want to say retaliation, but worrying about how we are perceived. And I hope that we continue to do this and have these types of conversations and, and also including the community. But like what was said, if we can all do it in a respectful manner, that would be great. I am, you know, my colleagues know me, that I'm very passionate sometimes, and I speak my mind a lot in committee meetings and my thoughts, and, you know, there may have been a tear or two, but in the end, I think we all have that mutual respect, whether we agree or disagree, and if that could spread community-wide as well, that would be great.
All right, seeing your other comments, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you.